I'd like to call the weekly City of Auburn City Council meeting to order. Today is March the 6th, 2014. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor McCormick?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counsel Cuddy?
Here.
Counsel Rosika?
Here.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Legions, please?
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please stand, please remain standing for a moment of private prayer or reflection? Thank you, please be seated. Would the clerk please read our rules and regulations in regard to public to be heard? At this time, we will open the public to be heard portion of the council meeting. As a reminder, in pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and any affiliation. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the City Council, city government, or matters of general city concern. And all speakers before council will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum. Anybody? Mr. Davis?
Yes, Norm Davis, Auburn's Housing Commissioner. I want to take this opportunity to thank the DPW crew of Mike Talbot and Tom Gayback for the splendid job they've done with all the snow that's incurred upon our city. They did a very excellent job, especially along Division Street. Kudos. And for them to continue to keep up the good work. And let's enjoy our council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? If not, we'll close that section of the meeting. And we'll have the approval of the February 27, 2014 minutes is their sponsor. Counsel McCormick, second by Counsel Cuddy. Would clerk please read the, uh, call the roll?
Motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, February 27th. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rosika?
Yes.
Presentation and proclamations?
None.
Public announcements?
None.
City managers report?
I have a few items. One is an announcement that we received from NICEG that there'll be low-flying helicopters in our area tomorrow, so not to panic. I want to give a quick update. Our comptroller has been with us for a couple of weeks, and we're moving ahead on a lot of fronts. I just want to tell you some of the changes that are happening already. Laura Wills has already met with all the department administrative personnel to review procurement procedures and new restrictions on purchasing without requisitions are putting, being put into effect. That's been a kind of a chronic problem. Working on the budget, we're defining the line items with more care this year than we have in years past, so we have better definition and accountability. For example, if you remember the budget, the line item services had become a catch-all for a lot of different things. So we've added some line items, and we're trying to segregate things so that they're easier to identify and track. Separate budgets in some areas are being combined. So for example, and this has been a kind of a chronic issue, the budget looks a lot more complicated than it is because we've chopped it up into so many pieces. Department of Public Works has 24 different budgets within it, and we're able, this coming budget year, to consolidate a lot of those. So for example, things like signal maintenance and street lighting, they're really the same function. We rolled those together. In the area of parks, we'll roll parks, rec, and administration, park maintenance, playground operations, adult recreation, just into a parks line item. These breakouts, I think, are remnants from when the city had a lot more staff and more active programs in these various areas. The other change you'll see when we start presenting the budgets is that we're restoring the benefits back to the department levels. Our previous comptroller had taken pensions and health insurance and other benefit costs and lumped them into a category outside of the individual budgets, and we're going to put those back in, so you'll get a better image and handle on what each department actually costs. Among other things, outside of the budget, we've reestablished a budget transfer procedure for line item changes within department budgets. So if a department needs to make an adjustment now, there's actually a defined procedure. For quite a while here, without the comptroller, it's been something that's been an adjustment after the fact. Now we're getting more proactive on that. And finally, Laura's working on an asset inventory for DPW to catalog all of our materials and small tools, and then institute a procedure for checkout of those items. The other item is just an update on the Mill Street Dam. Turban installation is still scheduled for Monday. Bill, you have some late-breaking information, because I know some members of council are interested in this.
Yeah, I just spoke to Gene Shoemaker-Franzak, who's, he's arranging for the crane to be there. Now, this turbine's coming from near Ottawa, so hopefully it doesn't get waylaid at the border. But they're expecting the trucking company said they'd be here between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m., and then he's hoping to have it unloaded shortly thereafter. What they'll do is they unload it all, put it on the ground, and then for the next two weeks, they'll be assembling it inside. But hopefully by noon, it should be wholly, hopefully the trucks will be unloaded and all the equipment will be right there for full viewing. So eight to 10, best shot of when it's going to get here.
When do you expect that to be operational, Bill?
I mean, we should be, you know, he's got another month and a half, I think, to get it operational. So we're hoping to have everything operational, you know, sometime in April, fully going.
Very good, thank you.
And lastly, there were two letters received recently, one from the school district and one from CEDU. I left those with the clerk. I don't know if you want to read them into the record at this point, or?
Oh, sure, would you like me to?
Please.
Sure. From the Auburn City School, Mr. Constance Evelyn, Superintendent of Schools. Dear City Council Members and Mr. Selby, I'm writing on behalf of the Auburn Enlarged City School District to ask you to reconsider how the city bills the district for the cost of ice at Casey Park. For many years, the arrangement has been that the district paid for the time it used ice for games and not practices. This year, the cost of ice per hour was increased, and we were informed that beginning with the 2014-2015 school year, the city would be billing the district for both game and practice hours. All of our budgets have been tightened over the past few years. The cost for ice for our hockey program was $1,980 in the 2012-2013 school year, and for the next year, we are estimating $12,125 based on increases in the cost per hour and the number of hours for which we are being billed. We are hoping that in the spirit of cooperation, we can come to an arrangement that provides the district with a fixed cost for ice hockey. A fixed cost would assist the district in the school budgeting process. The Auburn Enlarged City School District proposes that we pay the city a flat fee of $5,000 for the 2014-2015 school year so that our hockey team can utilize ice for games and practices during the winter season. I appreciate your consideration of this matter and look forward to hearing from you. It will be important that all community leaders work together to manage yet another difficult budget season. Sincerely, Constance Evelyn, Superintendent of Schools. And from the Q County Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Andrew Fish, dear Honorable Mayor Quill and members of council, I would like to express my support for metered parking on the north side of Garden Street. This option is beneficial to business development efforts, the affected businesses, and the community. Much of the recent attention on business development in Auburn has been focused on the main downtown corridor, including the portion of State Street located south of the railroad. Development of the Garden Street area shows a successful geographic expansion of development to the northern portion of State Street and the city. This expansion of focus should be supportive for the good of the greater community. The proposal of metered parking on Garden Street will benefit the Auburn community through increased revenues generated directly by the parking meters and additional sales tax from incoming and existing businesses. These revenues will help to ease budgetary pressures that the city has been facing in recent years. The business, businesses are also in agreement with the metered parking as it will increase parking availability for customers and stimulate patron turnover that could lead to additional sales. Due to the benefits that could be realized by the City of Auburn and its businesses, the Chamber of Commerce favors the proposal for metered parking on Garden Street. This measure would help to support continued business development along the northern portion of State Street and the city as a whole. Sincerely, Andrew Fish, Executive Director, Q County Chamber of Commerce.
Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Secret resolutions?
None.
Ordinances. Ordinance number two of 2014, amending parking ordinance to add parking meters on West Garden Street. This will be a first reading, so there'll be no action by council.
Or not bond ordinance, but ordinance number two of 2014, authorizing amendment to the Code of the City of Auburn, Chapter 285, entitled Vehicle and Traffic. Whereas Chapter 285, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, provides for speed zones, parking restrictions, and metered and lot designation for parking. And whereas Article 5, Parking, Standing and Stopping, specifically Sections 285-14, sets forth parking, standing, and stopping restrictions, and Paragraph A designates where standing and stopping restrictions shall apply on designated streets and highways. And whereas the street designated as Garden Street, now known as West Garden Street, provides a restriction that on the south side, no parking is allowed from State Street to arterial west. And whereas the City of Auburn is desirous of amending that section to provide for parking as follows. Garden Street on the south, no parking from State Street to the arterial west. West Garden Street, south, no parking from State Street to arterial west. And whereas the City of Auburn is desirous that metered parking be allowed on West Garden Street, and Section 285-18, entitled Parking Meter Zones, states in Paragraph A, public highways, parking meter zones are hereby established on highways as follows. West Garden Street, north, from State Street to arterial west, 10 metered spaces. And whereas, the current ordinance specifies the number of meters on each street and breakdown of time limits as follows. The additional two-hour meter shall be allowed on West Garden Street. West Garden Street, two-hour meters, 10, on the north side from State Street to arterial west. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that the additions and deletions set forth in this ordinance shall be effected to amend Chapter 285 of the Municipal Code of the City of Auburn as designated herein, and be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Auburn that the ordinance shall take effect upon publication.
Thank you. Members of council, the manager has informed me that Items F and G have been pulled, so that's going to be Agreement Resolution 41 and Financial Resolution 42. Council Resolution 36 of 2014, Special Meeting for the Dates, for Dates for the fiscal 2014-2015 Budget Work Sessions is their sponsor. Counsel Cuddy, second by Counsel Rosika. Any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Has it been read yet?
Would you like me to read it?
Sure, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Counsel Resolution Designating Dates for Special Meetings to the 2014-2015 year. Whereas according to the City Council Rules and Procedures, meetings of the Auburn City Council occur on Thursday of each week of each month, that the City Council Rules and Procedures allow for special meetings to be held. And in order to provide for adequate times and dates to allow the City Council to consider the budgets of all city departments, it is necessary that they be conducted as special meetings on Saturday, March 15, 2014, and Saturday, March 22, 2014, in addition to the regular weekly meetings. And said meetings shall take place at the Auburn City Council Chambers, Memorial City Hall, 24 South Street, Auburn, New York, and shall commence at 9:00 a.m. on each of those dates. Now therefore, be it resolved that the special meetings for budget work sessions be held by the Auburn City Council on Saturday, March 15, 2014, and Saturday, March 22, 2014, said meetings to take place at the Auburn City Council Chambers. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give notice to the public of the special meetings.
Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rosika?
Yes.
Thank you. Agreement Resolution 37 of 2014, authorize the mayor to enter in a contract with the Finger Lakes Dog Protection Agency is their sponsor. Counsel McCormick, second by Counsel Cuddy.
Agreement Resolution Number 37 of 2014, authorizing the mayor to enter a contract with Finger Lakes Dog Protection Agency. Whereas the City of Auburn has been contracting with Finger Lakes Dog Protection Agency to provide dog and control services and enforce the laws and ordinance of the State of New York and the city. And whereas the current contract with FD, FLDPA expired on December 31, 2013, and the dog licensee and oversight of control services is the responsibility of the city clerk's office. And whereas the city clerk has met with Carl Collier, owner of FLDPA, and has negotiated a new two-year contract, terms shall be effective on the first day of January 2014 through the 31st day of December 2015. And whereas FLDPA has provided these services to the city for many years, and the proposed agreement stabilizes the fees paid at the same rate that were paid during the calendar year 2013 with no increase, and these services are essential in order to provide for the dog control requirements of the law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve an agreement with the Finger Lakes Dog Protection Agency to provide dog control services and enforce the law and ordinances of the State of New York and the City of Auburn at the same rate that was paid by the city to the agency for the year 2013. And the mayor is authorized to sign a new agreement with a two-year term commencing January 1, 2014, and expiring December 31, 2015.
Any discussion? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rosika?
Yes.
Thank you. Council Resolution Number 38 of 2014, bid award for wastewater treatment plant SCADA Improvements Project. And I guess you have all the handouts that are, that were just handed out by the clerk. Is there a motion to put this on the floor? Counsel Cuddy, second by Counsel McCormick.
Award Resolution Number 38 of 2014, awarding a bid for the supervisory control and data acquisition at the wastewater treatment plant. Whereas the supervisory control and data acquisition, also known as SCADA equipment and software, has been acquired and installed at the wastewater treatment plant. And whereas it was necessary to install new fiber optic wiring to connect the SCADA system to all plant systems. And whereas on March 14, 2014, bids were open for the project, and the following bids were received. Concord Electric Company of Rochester, New York, $197,000. O'Connell Electric Company of Victor, New York, $198,000. Wademan Electric Incorporated of Syracuse, New York, $199,640. And J&amp;E Electric of Auburn, New York, $225,600. And whereas the consultants for the city, CRA, have reviewed the bids and references and recommends award to Concord Electric Corporation as the lowest qualified bidder. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby award a bid for the installation of new fiber optic wiring to connect the supervisory control and data acquisition to all plant systems to Concord Electric Corporation of Rochester, New York, in the amount of $197,000. Said costs to be charged to account number HG8130-440-GQ.
I see the department heads here, Vicki Murphy, would you like to step up and give us a little background on this, please, so the folks are, understand where we're spending this money?
Yeah, it's at the wastewater treatment plant, and as was just read, it's for our, it's the computer system, and it gives us controls of the whole plant. It was actually part of the consent order that was in 2010. They highly, the DEC highly recommended we do this, so we did have the money in our reserves at the time, and so we put aside that money for this whole project, and this is part of that project.
Counsel, any discussion? The only thing that I would ask is that we get this information to us in a timely manner. It came just minutes before the meeting started, so in the future, if we could just get this out so that we have time to review it?
Yeah, bids were just opened yesterday, I think.
The bid was just opened on Wednesday, that's, that's the issue.
I'd just like to get it as soon, get to it as soon as possible, get it out to us. Anything else? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rosika?
Yes.
Thank you. Council Resolution Number 39 of 2014, authorizing the advertisement for bids for the traffic signal upgrade project is their sponsor. Counsel Rosika, second by Counsel McCormick.
Council Resolution Number 39 of 2014, authorizing the advertisement for bids for the traffic signal upgrade project. Whereas the Auburn City Council has pursuant to Resolution Number 41 of 2012 authorized that the city proceed with the traffic signal upgrade project. And whereas Fisher Associates was appointed to prepare the preliminary and final design work for this project, and the final design has now been approved by the New York State Department of Transportation, and the project is ready to be advertised for bids. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council hereby approve the advertising for bids for the traffic signal upgrade project pursuant to the final design that has been approved by the New York State Department of Transportation.
Bill Lupien's here this evening. Bill, would you like to comment on this, please?
Yeah, this is one of those locally administered federal aid projects where we will be getting 80% funding reimbursement from the federal government and 15% from the Marchiselli, so we'll be getting reimbursed a total of 95% for all eligible items. Almost everything on this is eligible, so there'll be very little portion of the city's contribution. Basically doing five intersections and removing one light there on the corner of, a blinking light on the corner of State Street in Washington. It's new signals, going through the, making it fully compatible. I think we got North Division at Prine, Prine at State, Seymour at State, then over here on East Tennessee Street at Seminary, and then Lake Ave at Owosco Street.
Very good.
Okay.
Go ahead, Counsel Cuddy, please.
Yes, Lupien?
Yes.
Will this take care of the cinder blocks holding up the traffic?
Yeah, it'll take care of it. At the Liberty Store, yes.
Okay, good, good. I just want to make sure that that's going.
It's been a long, ongoing problem, unfortunately, and that's good, it's going to be taken care of. Is there any other discussion? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rosika?
Yes.
Thank you. Award Resolution Number 40 of 2014, authorizing the purchase of a street sweeper is their sponsor. Counsel McCormick, second by Counsel Rosika.
Award Resolution Number 40 of 2014, awarding the purchase of a street sweeper. Whereas the Auburn City Council has previously approved a resolution whereby the Department of Public Works was authorized to advertise for bids in order that the city purchased a street sweeper. And whereas bid specifications were received, and bid specifications were advertised, and bids were received, an Elgin Broom Street Sweeper met all specifications, and the bid was in the amount of $176,711. And whereas an additional bid was received from vintage equipment for a Stuart Amos model S4 street sweeper, however, this equipment did not meet the bid specifications. And whereas it is necessary to award the bid to Joe Johnson Equipment to provide for the purchase by the city of the Elgin Broom Badger Street Sweeper in the amount of $176,711. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby award a bid for the purchase of a street sweeper to Joe Johnson Equipment for the purchase of an Elgin Broom Badger Street Sweeper, the price of which is in the amount of $176,711, and said resolution is hereby approved and shall be effective immediately.
Discussion? Anybody? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rosika?
Yes.
Thank you. Financial Resolution Number 43 of 2014, authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2013/14 budget for a transfer for the Water Revolving Loan Fund is their sponsor. Counsel McCormick, second by Counsel Cuddy.
Number 43?
Please.
Author, Financial Resolution Number 43 of 2014, authorizing a budget amendment to fiscal year 2013-2014 budget for a transfer to the Water Revolving Loan Fund. Whereas the Water Revolving Loan Fund is a city-funded program to assist city property owners with the repair and/or replacement of water laterals. And whereas there has been significant increase in requests for funding assistance towards the repair and replacement of water laterals within the city, and the Water Revolving Loan Fund has become depleted and is no longer able to loan funds for new water lateral repair projects. And whereas a transfer in the amount of $375,000 from the water fund balance is necessary to address the current $6,657.49 fund deficit, and to provide capital to loan for new projects for the remainder of the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that one, the Auburn City Council does authorize a transfer of $375,000, decreasing the water fund, unreserved fund balance account number F909, in the amount of $375,000, and increasing the water fund revolving loan account number HF99.503.002, in the amount of $375,000. And two, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its approval and adoption.
Any discussion? Counsel Rosika, please.
Yes, I'd like to know how the transfer amount was determined. I mean, we don't have any background here of how many they expect to replace. Also, I think, at this point here, I think we need a policy here in order to make sure that these funds do not get depleted again. I think we talked about policy, about how we're going to, if these have to be done, that we should do it by a bid process. I know we talked about that on the source. I think that this should benefit as well, so that we don't deplete this fund unnecessarily by awarding the job, I mean, it's up to the individual homeowner, of course, but awarding the job to perhaps someone that, if they shop around a little bit more, would have a better price. So I think we need that type of policy. I have no problem with us doing a 0% loan, but I do have questions about how this amount was arrived at.
Counsel Cuddy?
I know that there was discussion with Corporation Council regarding the plumbing board coming up with some kind of, you know, some kind of coordination. But what I'm mostly interested in is the fact that, you know, I think this is a good program. What it does is it shows the people of Auburn, when, when we're doing work to upgrade their water services, that if something unfortunately happens to the lateral, that the city is showing responsibility of providing them, providing them 0% loan, so that both the taxpayer and the city can, can come to an agreement and, and upgrade our water system. What it does is it shows that our water fund balance is a very dynamic, it's a dynamic fund, and, and that's one of the reasons why I was very supportive of the, of the bond ordinance that we didn't pass last week. And this is just an example of one of the things that the water fund can do to help the people of Auburn, and, and I'm going to vote for this because it's, it's going to help the taxpayers, especially those that have unfortunate issues with their water lateral, and it shows that the city is, is working to come to some agreement so that they're not paying too much for the repairs that, the infrastructure that needs to happen in the city.
Anybody else? Counsel Rosika?
I don't have a problem with the zero. I just want to know how the amount was determined. And also, I see that we have a negative fund balance. It's basically a rubber check, so that concerns me as well, is that there's, you know, what happened here? I mean, if we can have a little explanation as to how this number was arrived at, is what the justification for this amount, and, and how we had, basically wrote a bad check.
You mean the negative?
Hang on one second, maybe the controller's here, she can answer that question. Hang on one second, maybe the controller's here, she can answer that question. And I think Vicki, too, in terms of the estimated number of laterals and the cost per lateral, the...
Yeah, I don't have the reason for the estimate. I think Vicki could probably help you out with that. But it's not actually negative in the total fund, it's a negative for that project. So there were other funds that were covering that, so it wasn't a rubber check, it wasn't like there was no cash there. It was just that that fund went negative and borrowed from another project.
Isn't it supposed to come back to council for transfer monies in a fund?
It should, yes.
Yes, so that shouldn't happen again. It should come for our discussion so we can authorize a transfer so it doesn't have a negative fund. So whoever had that happen should have been aware of what was going on, so we didn't end up with a $66,000 negative balance in that account.
Yes, I agree, and that's one of the reasons that we're changing the procurement policies, or adhering to our procurement policies, as Doug discussed.
I was going to say, there should be some kind of a policy in effect so that doesn't happen.
And I think that we're going in the step in the right direction by buffering it with $375,000 because of the frequency of water main breaks or issues between the lateral and the mains. Again, I think that especially now, we want to, again, have enough so that we can anticipate any kind of disaster that might happen with our infrastructure.
Counsel Ruseka?
The way I understand it, this is laterals that are, because of the meter replacement, there's a number of galvanized pipes feeding the, many of these older homes, and these are the issues.
Actually, this resolution is just to refund the fund. The next resolution is for the 0% for the meter replacements.
Well, I understand they're both related.
To answer your question about how many, we know how many so far are bad piping and that we haven't been able to replace with this new project. We don't expect all of them to use this, but we made an estimate, some of them will be the short side, some will be the long side, so there's some variance in cost, but we made an estimate. There's about 300, we think, right now, and, you know, not all of them will take advantage of this, but some of them will, and so this might need to be refunded again right after the end of this fiscal year, but this should get us through this fiscal year.
So you're expecting a great deal, more than 300, when you talk about $375,000?
Well, remember, we also always have this fund available, but it's not 0%. So those people that use it regularly, like I'm going to say, anywhere from 20 to 40 per year, those will also still happen, so.
So you're estimating somewhere between 320 uses, again, they get $375,000.
We aren't through the whole thing, we've only done a third, so there could be many more.
So I guess I got to ask the hard question, Vicki. I mean, you're going to have to look in a little bit in your, I guess, crystal ball and take a whag at it, but how many do you expect that fall into this category where because of this meter replacement effort that we're going to identify these, how homes have these issues?
I'm thinking, I'm hoping, it'll be under 500, but not everybody will take advantage of the program, they'll just do it themselves, so I guess we just wanted to fund it for the rest of this fiscal year, and then, yeah, we'll look at it again.
Is there any other discussion? Because I just have a few comments that I'd like to make. Number one, I also think this is an important program. This is a hardship unfortunately that the city brought upon. The taxpayers of the community, they have this water replacement or this meter replacement, and because of that, a lot of people are recognizing that they have to have new mains brought into their houses, so I think it's important that we as a city help out as much as possible. I do have a couple of questions. I think that, and we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, John, that you were going to talk to the Plumbing Board, we were going to have a policy brought back to council, so the contractors that are bidding on this or are involved in this, there's a clear understanding of how the city would pay for any water replacement lines. I think that should happen, it needs to happen. I also think so that we can make sure that this money is spread across as many people as we can possibly help without drawing down our fund balance and the water accounts. Another question I have, and I think this is going to take some research, it was brought up with the discussions of the Regional Water Authority. John, this is a question for you. Where at the time, we collect monies from our towns for the water system, and of course, monies come into the community for that specific purpose, for generation of water through the main lines and things like that. How do we go out now, and I guess my question is, should we be taking money from our general fund account and not the water fund? Because the water fund is specifically, we've taken money in from the towns for specific purposes of upgrades to the system that would enhance the towns, not the residents of the city.
Doug, do you want to speak to that?
The towns pay a rate based on what it costs us to provide them with water service. Their infrastructure is covered by them, you know, their own costs, so what we charge the towns is actually less than we charge your own residents. So our own residents are paying, in many cases, more money.
A part of that, a part of that cost is for the upgrade, for the maintenance and for the overall, so how do we not co-mingle those funds so there's no, you know, we don't have a problem with lending money to the residents, which I think is a good idea, I just want to make sure it comes from the right area.
I believe this is the right area because it is a water fund, and everything is in the water fund. Everything from these kind of loan programs to the operation of our infrastructure and to the debt service that is paid for, I think is very appropriate. It's where traditionally this money has come from for the revolving loan program.
Can we look into it and make sure that that's...
We'll double check that.
That, and how long would it take for a policy to come back to council for specific on how we let this money out, how we allocate this money for contractors?
Let me speak to that. I met this week with Carl Castiglione, who is our plumbing inspector, and we have pretty much have criteria for the sewer revolving loan fund. I am going to speak with him again on the water because they are somewhat different, but I think the criteria will probably be very, very similar. Right now, there is an application that's being filled out by those people who want to access the loan fund, and we're going to look at that to change the requirements that have to be met. And we have talked about multiple bids, we've talked about with the sewer maybe a ceiling and what can come out of the fund, because those are very, very expensive repairs, and to look at homeowners as opposed to business. So we'll come back in another week or so with that policy, and I think that probably within that same timeframe, I can meet with Carl again, and we'll come back with the requirements for the water fund.
Great, great. With that, I'm going to ask, I'm going to make a motion that this be tabled until we, those things are looked at and we have complete debate on it. So I think it, I don't think anybody needs this to happen right now, right? There's no water replacements going on at this stage of the game.
I don't know, we probably have some pending requests.
And I know the ground's kind of frozen.
I actually heard today, I have two that want to get in the program, and it's in a deficit right now, so we do have people that want to get in.
My point is, can the lines, can they dig right now because of the problems with the, you know, the ground's frozen?
They must be able to, and they're doing them, I know, but...
Oh, they do. I know that we've had, over the winter, laterals replaced.
So...
I know of two right now. As a matter of fact, I was just going to email the status, so.
Counsel Cuddy?
Again, we don't want to inconvenience them. Also, we don't want to have a deficit in that, in that one particular area. I think tonight we could, we could vote to transfer those funds, and that way the people can take advantage of that opportunity.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see a policy, number one, so that funds are not depleted in a timely manner, and also I want to make sure that we're drawing from the right account. So I'll make a motion and we table it for one week until the Corporation Council and the manager can get back to us that we're doing the right thing, so. Motion on the floor table. Is there a second? Counsel Ruseka?
I'll second that. I think we need to...
You don't have any discussion on a table. Could you call the roll, please?
Motion to table Financial Resolution Number 43 of 2014. Counselor McCormick?
No.
Counselor Cuddy?
No.
Counsel Ruseka?
Yes.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Does not pass.
Counsel Ruseka, did you want to finish the discussion?
Yes, I think it was important to table this because what we need to do is, I really feel that we need to have this policy in place. We've seen the sewer fund depleted because of, you know, heavy use, and I want to make sure that the people that actually end up paying for this, which is their taxpayer, not only do they get the best value by getting it out to competitive bid, but we extend this opportunity to as many as we can because it would be out to a competitive bid. So this is why I feel it's very important. Maybe somebody might not be able to, want to take the time to shop out for the best bid, maybe they were, you know, get some recommendation, but not quite often, you know, a recommendation or without any competitive bidding, you may not be able to get the very best price. So I really feel that this is important so that, like I said, to maintain the fund as much as possible and to get the users the best value for their money.
Counsel McCormick?
To your question, Counsel Camardo, I was wondering if the comptroller could talk to us about the water fund.
Sure. Lauren, could you come forward, please?
If the, could you speak to the water fund as far as what, if we're working with the correct fund or not?
Yes, it would come out of the water fund because that's where, that's where the infrastructure is paid out of.
Right, okay.
But are you sure that because we're taking money in from the towns, that we're lending money out? I think that's more of a legal question than a accounting question, because I want to make sure...
All the money goes into the fund.
I understand it does, but it's, when we had the regionalization meetings with the
towns, one of the questions that would come up was regarding sewer and water, is how the towns' money was going into infrastructure and not any infrastructure in the city. So that was a question that arisen many times with our discussions. So I just want to make sure that we're on the right path and that we don't have any problems with lending those monies out. So I think that was one of my questions.
Well, I understand your question, but the comptroller, if anyone in the building could, should be, if she doesn't know which is the correct fund, no one would.
Well, it's a legal question, and I think even Mr. Rossi said he was going to look into it, so...
Really, at this point, the towns have no ownership interest in our system, they're simply customers under contract.
They pay a fee into our, for our water, and part of that is broke down because of infrastructure and administrative costs.
But when, if I could clarify, when we calculated the towns' rates, we took out the pipes that are considered city pipes, so the smaller laterals are not part of the, they're only the, it's a certain percentage, they based it on size of pipes. The whole study was done on size of pipes, and they said this percentage belongs only to the city, so that's the rate that the city has to pay for that portion, it's not part of the towns' rates. That's why they pay less.
Yeah, I understand it. I'm just saying, when everything's co-mingled together, we don't have a separation of what's city and what's town.
We do from the study, though, we do.
Well, how much is it from water, then?
I'd have to look back through it, but it's a percentage.
That's what I mean, I just want to make sure we're going about this the correct way.
I think this is the correct way, but that's my own...
It's the traditional way that the city has been doing it for decades, and I think that, you know, infrastructure, water, they, I don't see why we would want to try to change it.
I don't want to change it, I want to make sure we're doing it the right way, is my question. And if we, and if we, and if we need to change it, we need to.
But I guess we would have to have something...
That's our responsibility.
But what's wrong with it? I mean, we can't just say, I don't know if something's wrong with something, and then, you know, either something is wrong with it and you respond to it when something's wrong with it, we can't approach things with like, I don't know if something's wrong with it, you know, I think we should...
It's our responsibility, if we feel something's wrong, Counsel, that we come and ask the questions, and we get proper answers so we can move ahead with them. So those are my, that was my question, I brought it to the forefront.
But feeling something wrong and actually coming up with, you know, evidence of some kind of malfeasance.
I did, we, I'm not saying it's any malfeasance at all, I'm just saying, we had discussion when the water discussions took place or the sewer discussions took place, that's why it brought attention to how we're spending our money with sewer and water across the board. Counsel Ruseka, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'd like a...
Are you set, Counsel Cuddy?
I'm fine for now, yes. I'd like to ask our Corporation Council, is this of a real concern? The amount, the, I'm going to say the earmark or dedication of any of these funds, I heard our city managers say that they have no interest ownership, but I believe what Counsel Camardo's getting is that they have a, they feel that, you know, possibly that, or he feels that their contributions should be only used for infrastructure that benefits everyone, including the towns. Is that a concern?
I don't know, I don't believe so, because the town has their own responsibilities for their own infrastructure. We're not in a regionalization. We have contracts with the towns for sewer and water where it is appropriate. So when that money comes in, we don't have the responsibility to go out to the town of Troop and fix their water line.
No, you're missing the point, John. The contracts specifically say that the distribution of water through our lines in the city that would affect the towns is part of that rate structure, correct? I'm talking about the distribution in the city, the main lines in the city. So part of it, right, so part of that fee that they're paying us is through transmission lines through the city that would directly impact the towns.
But that's our money anyway.
I understand that, not the whole system as a whole, not the individual ratepayers as a whole throughout the whole city.
Well, our rates are based upon our cost, the cost of us having the water and delivering it out. When the money comes in, it's our money, and, you know, so long as we deliver pursuant to our contract...
So what you're saying is there, we have no obligations to the towns for any of the distribution, how the money's spent, how it's put back into our infrastructure?
How it's spent is the city's business.
But the city, it breaks it down in the contract, how the money is spent through infrastructure repairs, through administrative costs, and so on and so forth. That's how we arrive at a rate. I think the engineers...
It's how we arrived at the rate, but I just wanted to remind...
Am I right or am I wrong?
That's how we arrived at a rate.
Sure, okay.
But I want to remind you that this is a revolving loan fund paid back by the resident from the city, so it's not going to affect the towns at all.
I understand it's not going to affect the towns, but the towns paid money into the system because of that. That's how we arrived at the rate. I think we both agree on that, don't we, Vicki? Okay, so Counsel Ruseka, did you have?
So if I'm understanding correctly, the concern that you're talking to right now about the, I'm going to say the dedication of these funds as far as infrastructure, is not an apparent point here, as far as legal counsel's saying?
No, I believe so, because it's all coming out of the same fund. And in practice, and the responsibility of the city is to keep the water flowing. Now, taking this money and putting it in a revolving loan fund isn't misappropriating the fund.
I understand.
It's just setting up a fund in order to help the residents to make repairs, rather than having to do it in one lump sum, they can spread it over a five-year period. That's for the regular water replacement, the water lateral replacement. But we're looking at legislation now to afford 0% rather than 6% to folks who are suffering damages and need replacement because of this meter replacement program, and knowing that the galvanized lines that they have are not going to survive, sooner or later they're going to fail. So I quite honestly don't see the connection between what the town pays us and setting up a revolving loan fund.
Any other discussion? I'm going to make another amendment to that. Vicki, how much would it cost to take care of these couple of people, just so we can get some good answers back? You think $25,000 would suffice for the time being?
That'd probably be more than enough, but I don't know what the two are, so. Water is cheaper than sewer, a lot cheaper.
So if we made, if we were to authorize $25,000 tonight, that would be okay to get us through so we could get some of these answers back to us and to have John write some kind of policy on how we're going to pay these contractors?
Yeah, but I just don't see the...
Is it...
That would be enough, yes.
That'd be enough.
I mean, Vicki, Ms. Murphy did give us an estimate that it would be around 500. I like the idea of, you know, not having to do this every month or every two months. I really like the idea of, you know, committing to the people of Auburn that we are committed... I really like the idea of, you know, committing to the people of Auburn that we are committed to this eventual 1% revolving loan. And, you know, I think, you know, and this is an estimate by Vicki, this is your, an estimate provided by you and the water fund. Is it, I just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's just to get us through this fiscal year, so, you know, and it's, and hopefully there'll be some left so that we don't have to come back to you and ask right away again, so.
So I do consider, you know, a long-term, if we are to amend it, just so that we can kind of-
Counselor, I'm just bringing amendments too so it doesn't get, it doesn't get shot down because it's, it'd be two to two and it would not, it would not-
Well, maybe there's a, not middle ground.
I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing is correct, and I just want to make sure that, I've had some questions here. I want to make sure they're answered. I have no problem helping out the taxpayers of the community with this, with this, but I just want to make sure it's done in a proper manner. So, and I, and I haven't heard any clear answers to my questions tonight. Counselor Rezika, did you have any?
Yeah, I would be in favor of this amendment, just to bridge this. I do feel that we need a policy, and I would like to see these answers. I don't want to be forced into perhaps making a decision that will affect people because of the need that Vicki has outlined. I, I would like a definitive answer as to how these, these funds really are apportioned. I believe Corporation Counsel is, is, is right, but, but I have some hesitancy because of what I see as what we talked about when we established rates, so.
Well, that's how I came up with my questioning because I remember specific areas in there. So I'm going to make an amendment that we funded up to $25,000, and it comes back to us. And John, how long you think you need? A couple of weeks or so?
No more than that.
Okay, for at least two weeks.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second, would you call the roll, please?
May I?
I can't on a-
It's an amendment.
I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry, go ahead. I was thinking of table, but go ahead.
I just want to say I don't agree with the amendment. I'll probably vote for it only so that we can move on. I think that if the comptroller and our city attorney can't answer the question satisfactorily for you, I, I don't know who can. I wish we could go forward with this. We've cut our staff so much that this is going to only make extra work. We're going to end up having to fund this anyway. The questions can be answered, the policy can be written, this could pass with the original amount. I just see this as questioning things that the answers are right in front of us and the professionals are here with us. These are the people that we pay to do this work, and they, if I can't trust them with what they're doing, we've got to do something about it. We shouldn't have to go down this road every time we have a resolution.
Well, there's questions here, Counselor. I'm going to do my due diligence to make sure that we don't have problems, as I stated last week, with policies that have, should have been looked into indepthly, and like we've talked about the cogeneration plan, the laid-off firemen, the radio system. There was a lot of questions that should have been answered and could have been answered.
Legitimate questions.
Exactly, and I feel that these are legitimate questions, and I feel that if two weeks is going to make sure we do the right job, I don't have a problem in doing that, and I would appreciate if Counsel and the staff would answer the questions so that we can feel satisfied and move forward. That's, that's, that's what they're there for, and I don't see any problem why we, it's going to take a lot of time to research a couple of these things. So, Lawrence, is there anybody else?
I just wanted to make the point that, as you're saying, rates were set to cover your costs based on distribution, admin, and whatnot. In that case, you wouldn't have any fund balance left for the towns because the towns are only taking in what they're expending. Therefore, you wouldn't be transferring any town money to this revolving fund because they don't have a fund balance.
Yeah, but we do in the water fund, though.
Yes, we do in the water fund, but if you're saying that what the towns are paying equals the town cost, then they wouldn't be adding to the water fund balance. The water fund balance would all be related to city residents.
Then how come there was two separate areas in your, in your water account that said outside users and resident users in the current water fund, or the water budget? One, I believe, was $666,000, the other one was $1,006,000, to come to the $2.8 million fund balance that you had?
That's the rents.
The rents.
That's the money that's coming in. It's separated from the cost.
And that's what I mean, those are some of the rents that are coming in from the towns in that account, correct?
Correct, but those are only covering the costs, based on the analysis Vicki did.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? I'm going to call the roll, please. This is for an amendment to fund it up to $25,000 for two weeks.
The amendment to Financial Resolution Number 43 to fund it for $25,000 rather than $375,000. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Before I vote, I just would like to say that I'm not going to vote for this because I believe that, I believe, I trust in the numbers that were given to me by Vicki and where the wa, where the money is coming from in the water fund, so I'm going to vote no.
Counselor Rezika?
I'm going to vote in support of this amendment. I, you know, we've got to get in the habit of looking and doing our due diligence, so I'm going to say yes.
And Counselor Camardo?
As I stated, I, these questions came up weeks ago. I think they should have been answered. They should at least came back to Counsel for review. There's some other questions that I had. I think it's an important function of the city or program of the city that we fund the, these projects, so I'm going to vote yes, and two weeks we should have the answers so we can move forward with this. Carrie, correct?
That's for the amendment.
Yes.
Amendment's carried.
Yep. Council Resolution Number 44, 2014, authorizing a special lo- Yep.
You got to vote for the, you got to vote for the whole resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
And I still want to say a couple of things.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So this, I just want to be clear here, this notion of due diligence, and I understand what you mean, and, but I also think that, you know, one person's due diligence, you know, is, it's not, it's not, your due diligence isn't the same as my due diligence and might not be the same as the City of Auburn's due diligence. I think that what I don't want to do is, like, and I use the term needlessly quite a bit, needlessly add more time, add more work to our already stressed staff. And I, and I think that if, if the Director of Municipal Utilities says that $375,000 will get us through the rest of the year, we won't have to revisit this in two weeks or a month, and I think, I trust in the due diligence of our, of our professionals and our staff, and I just want to say that, that I believe we are doing due diligence.
Counselor Rezika?
One last thing is, like I say, we don't want to see this fund needlessly depleted because somebody doesn't shop around or they get given a price and they don't revisit this price. I think that we need to have a policy in place where these prices are bid. It's a win for the person getting the service because he doesn't have to pay back, he or she, I should say, did not have to pay back an inflated cost, and they get the, the work done by the, by a, by a competitive bid, and it's a, and it's a responsible bid. I think this would go a long way to, I'm going to say, manage and maintain these flows and give them the best chance for availability for everyone without having to go back to the well all the time.
Counsel Cuddy?
This fund would be, would not be in danger of being depleted if we passed the bond ordinance last week. I mean, this is a prime example of why that bond ordinance should have passed, and that's why, you know, I wanted to keep this, this current resolution, financial resolution, the same.
Counsel Rezika?
This button ordinance has nothing to do with the pumps or the wall on the treatment plant. This is, this is the pipe basically from the main, from the lateral end to the curb stop to the home. Or, well, actually, we don't go into the property line of the home. It goes from the lateral to a point on either the curb stop or to the city right away. This has nothing to do with what was voted on last week. It's totally independent.
Counsel Cuddy?
It absolutely does because it's, because it's the water fund, and that was what was at issue last week, and it's at issue right now, and I think that, again, this is, this is, if, this has so much to do with what we voted on last week. So I just wanted to put that on for the record that already we're having issues with the water fund, and, you know, I just think that, that connection needs to be made, or I wouldn't be doing my due diligence.
Counsel, can I, I'd like to ask you a question if I can. If you ask for something from the staff and it doesn't get back for a while because they're working on it, how do you move ahead with, to make sure that you feel, that you've answered to yourself at least, and not only the taxpayers of this community, how do you feel you've answered those questions? You just, just because somebody gets up and says, this is the way it is, you just, you don't have a, I don't think, I don't know if you have a problem with that?
You know, since I've been on Counsel, I haven't had that issue. I really haven't. I mean, I've been pleased with the kind of response I've been getting from the staff, and I, you know, I remember sitting out in the audience and, and, you know, hearing from the Counsel about not getting, getting back to them, but I have, I have not had that issue yet.
So myself and Counsel Rezika asked for some follow-up on how we're going to spend this money out of the fund balance from water and sewer, how we're going to allow the contractors come in and help people, and what kind of policy was going to be put in line. And I understand John's been working on it, and I appreciate that, but we don't have a policy as we speak, and I think we're, we want to make sure that the policy's in line before it moves ahead, and also some questions I have about the water fund.
But I-
And some questions that have come up this week regarding how, how we're spending the water fund, and that's how, if it's being spent on infrastructure, that's going to affect the whole system or just the residents of the city.
If I may, you know, a lot of what we were voting on last week was in the capital improvements plan that we, that the Counsel adopted in 2013, and, you know, that, there's a lot of initiatives in there that, you know, you know, that I don't know about, but they're in there, and I think that, that, you know, I trust if I look back, I can see that these are the things that are coming up. We have an excellent staff that is working to get grants and that is working, again, with a skeleton crew, and I do want to say that we, I mean, one of the reasons why it might be tough for some of us to get, to get information in a timely manner, it might be because they're, they're, they're busy because they don't have the kind of support that's needed to do the work to run the city as efficiently as they could. And I think the Counsel, when they do have a question, obviously, Counselor, if they do have a question, obviously, that information can back, can get back to them in a timely manner. But I do also think that the question needs to be specific, and it needs to be, it needs to have a kind of, I guess, you know, a relevance specific to an issue rather than a general, I guess, a general concern. I think specificity is very important because time is, is, of the, time is important to the, to the staff and employees of Auburn, and we need to give them the courtesy of like, of specifically asking them what we want, and to ask for, you know, general, like, what, general numbers, I need this, you know, it can be-
So where does, where's the general number, or where's the general questions? Could you give me a little specifics so I follow you what you're talking about?
Well, I guess just being, having to go, you know, what, what happened last week where we got a single snapshot of one day?
Because nobody had the answers the week before.
But that answer is not accurate because it's a single day in the life of the city.
Counselor, we had staff that didn't even know we had water fund balances and that much money as they did. They admitted to that. So we need to stick it with this one issue here and move on, but I just want to make sure that we're on the same playing field when we make, make these kind of, when you're making these statements, that they're, they're fair to the fellow, to your fellow counselors. So there hasn't been any non-specific questions. Questions have been very specific. They just haven't been provided to us in a timely manner, so we can make the decisions. Now, I have no problem if people need more time to do that, and I'm willing to give them the time, but I think we need to move on. Was there anything else?
What, just, if I may add on to that, and I will, we can move on. An idea that might be that if we're getting close to Thursday and we've got something in our packet that you have or I have questions on, that we call the staff member and tell them tonight, you know, it's up and I really still have some issues, maybe we could, before we get here and spend a lot of time doing this, we could talk to the staff before the meeting and maybe say, I haven't got the information I need, could we put this off or whatever, rather than do it here.
Well, the reason why it should happen here is so we have a full discussion so that Counsel is aware of what's going on of, of these, of these things that are coming forth, so.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it that way. I thought it was just questions that you needed answered. I didn't have any, but if you did, I'd respect that and see why you'd want to have it pulled or-
I'd like just to call the question.
Sure. Now, this is Financial Resolution 43 of 2014, authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2013-14 budget for a transfer to the water revolving loan fund.
As amended.
As amended.
And the amount of $25,000.
$25,000. Would you call, I guess we need a roll call on that.
Yep, Counselor McCormick?
I'm voting on this only to move it on. I had full confidence in it as it, as it was originally written, but I'll vote yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
I echo Counselor McCormick's sentiments. I do not want to deprive any of the people of Auburn that need this revolving fund. I wish we voted for the full amount, but I, just so that the, the people that can utilize this 0% revolving loan can get their money, I am going to vote for this. Yes.
Counselor Rezika?
I am going to vote for this as, as well. I feel that we have bridged it enough with enough right here, and we can get the answers and have a policy in place that will, will prevent a lot of needless spend down of this account and give it the greatest good to the number of people that can use it. So I'm going to say yes.
Carrie? Thank you. Council Resolution Number 44 of 2014, authorizing a special loan program for the water revolving loan fund at 0% financing. As a response, Counsel Rezika, second by Counselor McCormick.
Council Resolution Number 44 of 2014, authorizing a special loan program from the water revolving loan fund at 0% financing. Whereas the water revolving loan fund is a city-funded program to assist city property owners with the repair and/or replacement of water laterals, and whereas the City of Auburn has undertaken a citywide water meter replacement program that may require the need for residential property owners to improve water service laterals and connects in advance of the replacement of water meters, and whereas the City of Auburn is interested in assisting residential property owners that are in need of water service lateral repairs and replacement due to the water meter replacement program through offering a special water loan program at 0% financing, and whereas residential property owners seeking funding assistance from the special water loan program would be required to meet the following threshold requirements. One, that the property is located within the City of Auburn and is classified as a residential property with up to four residential units. Two, that the residential property owner is current with City of Auburn property taxes. And three, the property owner would need to apply for the loan program before June 30th, 2015. And whereas funding for the special water loan program would be made available through the City of Auburn Water Revolving Loan Program, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that one, the Auburn City Council does authorize a special water loan program at 0% financing through the City of Auburn Water Revolving Loan Fund Capital Account HF 8340.440.002, and make these funds available to eligible residential property owners that meet the threshold criteria listed above. Two, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its approval and adoption.
Discussion. Counselor McCormick?
I have a question on the four residential, residential property with up to four residential units. Is that, that's still considered residential if it's four units?
Yes. At the Codes Department, we discussed that, that any units exceeding four- At the codes department, we discussed that, that any units exceeding four, and any property exceeding four units is considered commercial.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rezika?
Yes.
Financial Resolution Number 45 of 2014, transferring monies from the General Fund to the Auburn Fire Department Budget, as their sponsor. Counselor McCormick, second by Counselor Cuddy.
Financial, Financial Resolution Number 45 of 2014, transferring monies from the General Fund to the Auburn Fire Department Budget. Whereas the Auburn City Council did lay off four firefighters in 2013, and is now experiencing excessive overtime expense due to the vacant positions, and is now desirous of returning four firefighters to duty with the Auburn Fire Department. And whereas, it is necessary that the Auburn Fire Department Budget be increased in order to rehire four firefighters for a period of time to and including June 30th, 2014. And whereas, it is necessary to increase Budget Line A 3410110 in the amount of $97,000 to cover the salaries through June 30th, 2014, and to increase the overtime Budget Line A 3410160 in the amount of $132,500 to cover 3.75 months of overtime and current overages of $95,000. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve a budget transfer from the General Fund to the Auburn Fire Department Budget Line A 3410110 in the amount of $97,000, and an increase in the overtime line A 3410160 of $132,500 to provide $10,000 per month for 3.75 months, and to cover current overages in the amount of $95,000.
Counselor Rezika.
Yes. First off, this whole issue is about a minimum manning staff level of 14. Now, because of this, we're caught in a rock and a hard place because of the judge's TRO. Personally, I believe that there should be no manning or staffing requirements in any kind of labor relation contract. The staffing level is a management prerogative and does not belong in a labor relations contract. When the city was under Chief Clarko, we had a, a staff of 12, and that's when the city had more industry and a larger population. Now, we can look at the city, we got some cities that I can compare to. Glen Cove has a population of 27,000, all volunteers. Their budget, 800,059, 859,000. Middletown, New York, a very similar sized city, slightly smaller footprint, similar population, has 32 full-time firemen and 80 volunteers. And their fire department total budget's 2.8 million. Then we got North Tonawanda, population's over 31,000, they've got 27 career members, as per their website, and 30 volunteers. And it appears that their budget for their fire department's 3.7 million. Now, if you look at Elmira, the total budget for their personal services is 4,211,000. Just the Auburn salaries and wages alone are 4,344,000. Now, they have a set of firefighters, let's see, I got it right here, in their, I took some pages out of their budget. Says the City of Elmira offers a career fire department, which in addition to firefighting, provides first responder EMS service, and is also the county hazmat team, very similar to the function of our fire department. The department is also responsible for all multiple dwelling fire inspections, as well as commercial property inspections. At the present time, the fire department is comprised of a chief, five deputy chiefs, four captains, seven lieutenants, and 38 firefighters in a fire marshal. That's about 56 people. Okay? We have in our employed, and these are the total costs of just the, of the personnel cost to the city. We have four assistant chiefs, the total cost to the city is about 527,500, with a maximum cost of 136,218. We got four captains, the maximum cost is 119,340, with a total cost per, of four captains of 473,300. We've got a total cost for lieutenants, and we have 13 lieutenants, of 1,425,103, with a maximum cost of a lieutenant of 113,923. Now, we have 43 firefighters, with a total cost of 4,369,387, with a maximum cost of a firefighter of 106,960. The total cost for the entire staff, this is, this is cost of just personnel, all benefits, all in, 6,940,357. Now, it's quite obvious, and I think even the citizen put it in the paper, this department is screaming that it needs to be restructured. We cannot sustain these costs. We need to, to work and try and do something, negotiate with this fire department to get something where it's affordable and, and keeps the most firefighters employed. We really, really have to take a hard look at this. I mean, how can we support a fire department standard of 14 men and ignore a police standard of eight? We have five on patrol. We have drug problems. We have domestic violence. We had, you know, it's not going away. How can we afford not to have, uphold one standard and not the other? I, and use the word, "We can't afford you." How can you say that? We need to, to make and strike a balance between public safety on both ends here. And, and to me, the, the total costs here are, are screaming that this thing, department needs to be restructured. It's quite obvious. I mean, we're looking at cities in New York that have tackled this and, and came up with some pretty effective and cost-saving solutions. And I think we can do the same.
All set. Counselor Cuddy?
Okay. I have a different perspective. One thing I want to say is that we're in negotiations now, and we're working on coming to a mutual agreement. What I do want to bring back and bring into focus, since we're at the beginning of a budget cycle, we're about to start a budget cycle. And my perspective is quite different than Counselor Rezika's respective, because when I was, started running for office in July, I was coming to the end of the, or closer to the end of the budget cycle in June, and I was coming to council meetings and watching as each counselor had their own, had their own version of what could be cut, and what could be cut, and what could be cut. And what happened is that there seemed, as from my perspective out in the, out in the audience, was that there was a lack of thought in what, what they were actually doing. Because a line isn't just a line, and, and the people of Auburn, the, the employees of Auburn, they do work, so we pay them to do the work for the city. It's not like, you know, it's, it's some kind of free ride. So I have respect for the work that they do and their, and their public service. But what I really want to address before I go, before I go into that, is I don't want us to make the same costly, costly mistakes that we did, this, that we did the last time in our last budget cycle. That's what's happening. We cut way too deep into a department, and it's costing us so much now because we didn't think, and we didn't, we didn't trust in the tried and true ways of collective bargaining and working because, and working with the bargaining unit. So I understand, Counselor Rezika, yes, the city is, is strapped. And I believe that, that both the chief and the bargaining unit understand that, and we want to work with them in negotiations. But what happened last year, not only with that, with that department and other departments in the years past, is that they've been cut to the bone, and they've been cut to the core. And we need to find ways in which we show respect for our public employees and not get in situations where we're ending up costing the city more money because we would rather look like we were governing rather than actually governing.
Counselor Rezika.
The whole thing is, is a manning staff level that is unsustainable for the city. The newspaper recognizes it, people out in the community recognize it. We need to be cognizant that we cannot afford staffing at this level. Now, these, these levels are what is driving this overtime cost. If we did not have this clause in any contract, which it should have never been in there in the first place, but that's water over the dam. It's our, our duty to try and minimize this impact. Manning staffing is the only reason that we have this overtime situation. That is the only reason. It was mandated by the judge on a TRO. If we were allowed to go to a 12-man structured minimum manning staffing, that cost, that wouldn't have occurred. It's all a function of this minimum manning of 14 that's driving these costs.
Counselor McCormick.
Thank you. What we have before us is a financial resolution to amend the budget so that we can hire the four laid-off firefighters back. That's simply all that we have in front of us, not the budget, not the contract. What, what this is, is to help minimize, at the very latest you could get it, the losses that have been happening since August, because we should not have risked or gambled with the city taxpayer money by laying off these firefighters, hoping that a judge might support the decision that you made. We should never gamble with the city taxpayers' money like that, or with the lives of people that work for us. There's four gentlemen here tonight that haven't had a job in about seven months. I, I feel that in August last year, they were laid off. It wasn't solely for the reason of cutting costs, because actually, we spent more than we would have, we spent more money than we would have if we just paid them to do their job. Unemployment insurance, overtime, legal fees, we spent more money than if we'd kept them. And that, to me, is, it's unbelievable, hard to explain, but now, finally, we're going to do the right thing, we're going to amend the budget, we're going to go negotiate the contract, and try to make decisions that don't risk city taxpayer money, and put the lives of families on hold and in limbo, and in some cases, really in jeopardy, while we play with city money. It's just, it's wrong, and it should never have happened.
I'm just going to make a couple comments, and then you can go next. I sat there chair in June last year when we're having these discussions, and I thought it was very important that we have very good analysis on every move we make, because here's just another example of when we don't do due diligence, when we don't look at the long-term effect of things that are going to happen, it costs the city taxpayers a lot of money. And unfortunately, at that time, it's almost like I had a crystal ball, I could see what was going to happen. We have a contractual obligation, we have a contract in line, it's a legal document that's, that's there, and until it's negotiated out, there's nothing you can do. And unless the city moves in that area where they're going to talk about manning, or whatever the case may be, it's going to stay in that area. And it's cost the city a lot of money. So, Counselor, I'm glad that you're realizing that all these decisions need a lot of thought, well-thought-out decision-making, that they are not going to cost the city taxpayers a lot of money. And that's up to us to do that. That's our due diligence, as I, as probably people are getting tired of the broken record when I keep talking about due diligence. But this is an example that's happened over and over and over again, things that weren't thought out, that unfortunately, who gets the bill? Mr. Taxpayer on the street. And a lot of people are affected on this, and unfortunately, we're, we're almost right back to, so I just keep talking about this, and I will keep talking about it, and I will keep looking out for the best interest of the taxpayers. So with that said, Counselor Rezika.
We are not playing with the safety of the citizens of this city. You look at North Tonawanda, okay, they have a budget of three points, let's see, let me see, of 3.7 million for that. They have 27 career firefighters with 30 volunteers. We have Middleton with 32 full-time fires and 80 volunteers. We have Elmira that has, I told you, 56 firemen. Somebody better to get on the horn and tell these communities that they're unsafe, if that's the way you feel. See, there's, the population in Glen Cove is 27,000. You got 31,500 or so in North Tonawanda. In Elmira, you got about 29,000. You're going to tell me those people feel they're threatened and unsafe? I don't think so.
Any other discussion? Everybody set? Would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rezika?
If I was to vote on this in pure raw motion, I would say no, but weighing the financial costs and the decisions, I have to say yes.
Gary.
Thank you. Any local laws?
None.
Tabledose of legislation?
None.
Other business, counsel?
I have-
Counselor McCormick, please.
Where's my notes? I just wanted to let counsel know and the public know that last week, Saturday afternoon, well, Saturday morning, there was a, a forum at the college that a lot of people attended in regard to the watershed, and it was a very good presentation. And it just coincidentally, the same day, that afternoon, Congressman Maffei had a forum out at this county soil and water building on County House Road, and he had invited representatives from Wayne County and Keegah County. And I wanted to compliment, we had several staff members there, and we were very lucky. And Wayne County and a lot of the Keegah County members, their planning department, their water and soil, the health department, but we had our Christina Selvick from the planning department, Tony DiCaro from the water filtration plant, Bill Lupien from our engineering department, and Mr. Selby, the city manager, all attended, and it was a really informative and a great opportunity to talk to Congressman Maffei about the different issues that affect everyone, the common ones throughout the whole central New York area. But we got to talk to him about, certainly, we put our two cents in for Auburn and the things that we could do, but we were really lucky to have such expertise there from the people that faced the water, especially the water infrastructure problems that seemed to come up quite a bit during that, that meeting. We had the frontline people right there, and it was really very good to have with them, and I thank them for being there for us. That's it.
Counselor Cuddy, please.
Yes, I have three requests. I am, would like to request the city manager prepare a report that can be presented to the council at the March 13th council meeting that gives an accurate accounting of our water fund balance, and how to use the various amounts of the fund balance, how the use of various amounts of the fund balance would impact the fund over the next three to five years.
When did you need that? Next week, you said, next week?
Uh, next, next week. I would also like to request another bond ordinance for this project, similar to the bond ordinance number one of 2014, to be brought before council. And I would like to see if the city, and third request regarding the, the water infrastructure, I would like to see that the city still apply for the state EFC loan program, even though the application will arrive late. As Debbie had mentioned, this past Saturday, we attended a meeting with our local congressman, Dan Maffei, about infrastructure projects. And at that meeting, there was Mr. Colosino, who is the mayor of Arcadia, and he was talking about how, how it was very difficult for his city to get low-interest funding for his infrastructure. And, you know, and alls I could think about was last week, how we're so lucky to be in Auburn, to have the population, to have the staff that we have, so that we could anticipate and apply for low-interest funding. So this, I hope this is something we can still pursue, and if we can talk to Christina Selvick to see if we can send in the application again. So that's, that's the request regarding the bond ordinance of last week.
Counselor, you all set?
I'm all set for, for that. I do have some-
I'm all set for that. I do have some, another thing regarding the school district.
Do you want to go ahead?
Could I do that now?
Yeah, we're under business. Go ahead, sure.
This is regarding the gap elimination adjustment, which has been part of the New York State's dealing with the school districts and how it affects most upstate communities or school districts. I would like Corporation Council to draft a resolution next week, March 13th, expressing our support, council's support, of repealing the gap elimination adjustment. School districts in our BOCs, Auburn school district included, have been heavily impacted by this practice. Since 2010, school districts have seen a reduction in $72 million in state aid due to the GEA. What was meant as a temporary measure to close the state budget deficit after the crash on Wall Street has turned into a common practice with no relief in sight. The Auburn school district alone has contended with nearly a $23 million reduction. This has meant cuts in staff and programming, the closure of a middle school, and increased class sizes. And this is where it's pertinent to us. The GEA not only affects our parents and children, it impacts our communities. Strong schools attract young professionals looking for educational opportunities for their children. Strong schools attract economic development. Strong schools increase property values. A school district not only has a few options when faced with deficits year after year. It can raid its savings, which can only last so long. It can raise property taxes, which can only be shouldered by taxpayers for so long. Or it can cut staff and programming, which make our children, our future, less competitive than others who don't face the same financial dilemmas. Our children should have the same educational opportunities, which is why a legislative body, which as a legislative body, we should stand with our school district and support its efforts to create a fair and level playing field. As Franklin Delano Roosevelt once said, "The school is the last expenditure upon which America should be willing to economize." Thanks.
May I ask a question? Is this time-sensitive, Counselor? Because our next meeting's normally just a work session.
It is. I talked to the superintendent at Huguenot Agabossis. The state is going to be taking action. There's legislation that can, it would show, yes.
Okay.
And I did talk to the superintendent and he is interested in the support of the Auburn City Council. Thank you.
Counselor Resika?
First off, I'd like to recognize our Auburn hockey team from their win last Saturday. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend that game. It was very well-done. Both teams played their hearts out. I've got to tell you, the Auburn team really pulled out a miracle. They played well. They well-coordinated. Their goalie was right on mark. I just want to wish them luck this Saturday in Utica. On another note here, given the issues that we had discussing under discussion last week about the finances and fund balance, I'd like to suggest that someone in our city finance, whether it's the treasurer or the comptroller, have a permanent seat in the council to address any questions, much that she's here tonight. And also on any resolutions that have any financial implications, I'd like to have her either concur or sign off on the agreement on any financial implications on any resolution so that we know a set of financial eyes looked at it. I think this is, you know, important going forward, especially in light of the fiscal challenges that we're going to be facing.
Counselor Cuddy?
I just want to get back on what Pete said regarding the Auburn hockey team. I also would like to wish them luck as they compete in Utica. I had a conversation with Walter Lowe and the superintendent of the Auburn City School District, who, again, with the reading of the letter from her tonight, shows a willingness to compromise and to work with the city. I would like to expand on that. Maybe consider a meeting with all the players, such as the Auburn School District, the hockey clubs like the Ice Hawks, and maybe some of the representatives from town boards that have students that go into, go to the Auburn School District, the Auburn and Large School District, so that maybe we can find other avenues, looking at the demographics of students and communities that take advantage, not take advantage, but enjoy our ice rink. I really think we should, you know, try to work with all parties to keep the ice rink going.
Could you just hold on? And the counselors are speaking, please. Go ahead, Counselor Resika.
I'd like to say that there's a great deal of energy in this hockey rink. I mean, a lot of people are very, very enthusiastic. It's very well-supported. It brought a lot of people from out of town this tournament, plus the Pee-wee tournaments that preceded this. The building was just packed. So there's so much good that's coming out of this hockey rink. And to tell you the truth, it might possibly be one of the best-kept secrets here of how well this facility is actually utilized. I know it's been brought up that, you know, this is a certain cost burden to the city. But given the overwhelming effect that this has, not only in our high school youth, but youth in general from surrounding areas in the towns and our city as well, that we try to do what we can to help schools make better use of this facility, increase its usage amongst independent and private groups, hockey clubs and such, as it does bring a lot of benefit to the city that maybe is not quite tangible, but does end up eventually being some tangibility when you talk about hotel stays and people that spend some time in the area. I feel that this facility really needs to stay on their, in our community and be supported.
Anything else? I'd like to ask counsel, if possible, maybe we could have this a resolution or just everybody would like to move on with it. I think we should join Stephanie Minor in Syracuse in her efforts that she's asking for help with infrastructure in her city. I think she's applying to the state or she's asking the state to intercede with some funds that are very crucial for, you know, at least our infrastructure in this area. And I think that if possible, we could join her efforts in giving support to the city of Syracuse for any efforts that can come to our community for any kind of financial assistance, so.
What is she doing? She's campaigning or?
She's appealing to the state to try to get infrastructure money to the city of Syracuse.
Send into, like, the Senator DeFrancisco?
I think she's talking to all of our elected officials in that area. I think we should do the same here in our area. And it seems like the state always finds money to do different things. So if there's any possibility of helping out.
We could send a letter?
Sure. But if nobody has objection, pardon me?
Maybe it would be a memorial. Would we memorialize this?
Or you think that we should move on with it?
That's generally the way you want to do it.
Good, good. And just another thing, too, is I also would like to congratulate the Auburn hockey team. I think that goes to show you what a great community Auburn is and we're very proud of them so as they move on. Second thing I'd like to know, Doug, if you could get us the numbers. And last week, we asked for the numbers regarding the repairs to the water treatment plant, the different repairs that needed to be made and the order, the importance of the repairs that need to be made to those areas, so, if possible. Anything else from anybody? If not, recap, please. Got everything? Do you want to go over the recap or? No, all set. We get everything that everybody needed?
I had Doug on the recap of the recap items that were overhanging.
I've gone back through my notes from December through January to amend what I handed out last week.
Okay.
Okay, there's a request for executive session by the manager to discuss labor negotiations and?
Yes, there are two items for executive session. One is Paragraph E, which deals with collective bargaining in Section 105 of the Open Meetings Law. And the second matter is Subdivision F, which deals with the appointment of personnel.
Is there a motion for executive session? Counselor McCormick, second about Counselor Cuddy. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Be adjourned for executive session.